All right, welcome everybody. Welcome to the Lakeville Area School Board of Education Candidate Forum, brought to you by the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to welcome those in the room and those watching via livestream or through the rebroadcast. The Chamber is hosting three candidate forums this year, for the City Council, the ISD 194 School Board, and a joint forum for the House of Representatives Districts 57A and 57B. We'd like to thank the City of Lakeville for the use of the City Hall for the three candidate forums, as well as the livestreaming and rebroadcasting of this show throughout the election season. My name is Phil Rains. I'm with prevailing wisdom. I'm also the Chair of the Chamber Access and Issues Group, and I will serve as tonight's moderator. Want to also introduce Colleen LeBeau of LeBeau Associates, and she is also one of my Access and Issues members. So glad to have you on. She'll be doing the timekeeping. And it's the mission of the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce to serve as the advocate, resource, and leader for our nearly 600 members in the entire Lakeville business community. In accordance with our mission, we conduct these forums each election so that you may get to know the candidates who would like to represent and serve our businesses and our residents. We invited all eight Lakeville School Board candidates to join us at the forum. I believe we have one that was not able to make it here tonight. We've had seating today by random draw. So I'll introduce them from left to right. Paul Carbone, Daryl Hall, Matt Swanson, Amber Cameron, Laura Fangle, Brett Nicholson, and Don Seepersaw. My understanding is Zachary Bowman was not able to make it here tonight. He had another commitment that he could not make. So the format for the forum will be as follows. We will randomly draw the questions. All the questions have been provided to all of the candidates ahead of time, but we will randomly draw which questions they are. I do reserve for myself the opportunity to do one additional question at my discretion. If it is, it'll be a fun question. Nothing to put anyone off. We will not be taking audience questions. We ask everyone in the audience and our other-- the candidates who are not speaking at the time to just be respectful of other people. As always, this is a forum. This is not really a debate. We're here to learn more about you, and that's your opportunity to do so. The way it will work is 90 seconds for introductions and opening statements, 90 seconds to respond to each question, and then 60 seconds for a closing statement when we come to the end. With 15 seconds remaining in your time allotted, Colleen will hold up the yellow card and give you a fair warning. And when your time is out, she'll hold up the red card. Please wrap up as quickly as possible. I don't want to cut anybody off. It's no fun. So again, just remember, forum, not a debate. And I think we're ready to go, otherwise. Any questions? All right, excellent. In that instance, we're going to start off with the opening statements, 90 seconds apiece. We're going to start from the left, and we'll start with Mr. Carbone.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I am Paul Carbone. My lovely wife and I are residents of Lakeville. We have two daughters here, and our grandkids go to Lakeville schools. My experience spans from the classroom to the boardroom. I've spent 18 years in education, teaching at the college level. I've had the opportunity to observe in my college classroom students that have come out of the public school system, the parochial Catholic school system, and also the Christian school system. I've mentored college students to prepare them for the workforce, and I've also judged academic competitions. As a business executive, I've managed teams. I've handled large budgets, and I've also done strategic planning. That experience, along with talking to a number of parents over the course of recent time, has allowed me to focus on four items: academic excellence, budget responsibility, career readiness, and school safety. Academic excellence, at the core of every decision, needs to be, how can we get the student to their full potential? Budget responsibility, folks are your tax dollars. Every time you reach into your pocket to spend them, you need to know that there's a clear purpose and that there's transparency. Career readiness, diploma in hand. They need to be prepared for the next step, whether that's college, trade school, or going right into the workforce. School safety, period.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Hall.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Hall. I'm very proud to be running for the ISD 194 School Board. I'd like to begin by thanking the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate the opportunity that you have given us tonight to participate in this forum. I'd also like to thank those who will be watching, who will use these responses to make sure that they make informed decisions between now and November 5th. When my daughter and I moved to Minnesota, we, like thousands of others, chose Lakeville because of its schools. And we have been overwhelmingly rewarded by this decision. We love Lakeville, and we love our schools. As for me, I'm a professional with more than 25 years of operational and process leadership experience. I'm logical, I'm hardworking, and collaborative. I've managed $50 million business units, controlled budgets, been responsible for hiring and firing personnel, and negotiated contracts with key vendors. This district will do all of these things in the next year. So I feel well-equipped for the task, and I look forward to sharing more with you tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Good evening, Phil. Thanks for having us tonight, and thank you for the Chamber for providing this opportunity for us. My name is Matt Swanson. My wife and I have lived in Lakeville for roughly 20 years now. We have four kids that are currently in elementary school and middle school. So we are highly invested in the school system, and we also use our fair share of the resources that the schools provide. I am an attorney by trade. I've been practicing for 15 years with my primary area of practice is representing corporate boards. So I work and provide strategic decision-making, corporate governance, and policy implementation for our clients, helping them to make decisions of all sorts, and even representing them in conflicts that arise in litigation. So part of my job is handling dispute resolution on almost a daily basis. That includes working with different views, trying to find a way forward, taking the emotion out of the decision so we can push forward and make an effective resolution that works for all parties. I'm running for the School Board to utilize these skills in service of the community. My goals are to ensure that all of the students in our schools are provided with a high-quality education, that our district finances are not secret to the taxpaying public, and that funds are responsibly utilized for the purpose of improving the academic success of our students, and that we engage our students' parents as active participants in the education process to maximize our students' potential. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
Great. Thank you to the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce for this opportunity, and for those that are here tonight and those online that are listening. I'm Amber Cameron, and I'm the parent of two children in our school district. My husband and I moved to this community, like others, over 14 years ago because of the strong public school system, and we're proud to send our kids to Lakeville Area Schools. Through my work as the Director for Public Engagement Initiatives for the University of Minnesota Five Campus System, and through my volunteer work on the ISD 194's Finance Task Force, Facilities Task Force, the Boundary Input Team, and serving as a member and Chair of various city and county boards, I find purpose and energy in serving this community. I'm running to support and build on Lakeville Area Schools' great reputation. To continue being a school district of choice for families, we need to offer competitive salaries for teachers, secure high-quality curricula for our students, and support facilities that meet student learning needs. I am also running to ensure our district is transparent and accountable to all stakeholders. A key part of this is financial stewardship. I received my financial training at the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania. And through my work on various boards, I have experienced with complex budgets that include funding from federal, state, local, and private sources. Our School Board needs collaborative leaders who can effectively understand ISD 194's current issues and develop solutions that will prepare our students for our global world. I believe I have the skills, experience, and motivation to be this kind of leader, and I hope to have your support this fall. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fangle.
Good evening, and thank you to the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce for hosting this important forum. My name is Laura Fangle, and I'm a proud parent of two daughters, ages eight and four. My husband and I moved to Lakeville in early 2021 after carefully considering several areas in the South Metro. Ultimately, we chose Lakeville for its vibrant community and well-respected school district. Since moving here, we quickly immersed ourselves in the community. I joined the PTO to connect with other parents and contribute to our school. I have since served as Vice President and President the last two years and remain an active volunteer in the school. More recently, I collaborated with the 2023 Unite for 194 referendum team and represented our school on the Boundary Adjustment Advisory Committee. Over the course of the last three years, I have become deeply engaged in School Board discussions, particularly as we navigated a $7 million budget deficit. I was troubled to see vital services like 360 Communities being removed from our schools, impacting students and families who relied on their work. I witnessed firsthand the challenges faced by our teachers and staff as they strive to support students with fewer resources. And this last year, I observed the struggles our teachers faced during prolonged contract negotiations and the effects on classroom morale. I am driven by a belief that we can do better for our district. I believe I can be a dedicated advocate for public education on the board, and I appreciate the opportunity to share more about myself and my platform this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
Hi, my name is Brett Nicholson. I'd like to thank the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce for putting this forum on. I'm excited to announce that I'm running here for Lakeville School Board. As a longtime resident, entrepreneur, and parent with two children who'll be in the Lakeville school system for the next decade, I'm heavily invested in the future of our district. My wife Marcia is a current kindergarten teacher. So I can understand and empathize with our teachers on a daily basis, what they have to go through, what they deal with. With my experience as a managing partner of a consulting firm and background in human resources and project management, I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets, driven innovative solutions, and ensured fiscal responsibility for a variety of companies. Our school district is at a critical juncture. Rapid growth, rising demands, unchecked spending, call for leadership that prioritizes financial transparency, academic excellence, and supporting our educators. My platform focuses on three key pillars, basically the ABCs of me: academic achievement, budget transparency, ensuring our tax dollars are spent wisely, and championing our teachers and staff. We need to reduce the administrative burdens they face and let them focus on what they do best: teaching our children. Lakeville families deserve a School Board that works proactively with city planners and the business community to foster long-term growth without imposing unnecessary tax burdens. I believe we can creatively fund our priorities without continuously asking taxpayers for more. I'm running to make sure we plan responsibly for our district's future and deliver the best possible education to our students.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Seepersaw.
My priorities are quality and equitable education with student-centered decision-making, supporting our students and educators with resources and tools necessary for academic success, communication, and financial transparency. My family and I have lived in the Lakeville School District since 2005. Our kids have attended Lakeville schools since then. Our youngest is a high school sophomore. We now have grandkids in the Lakeville schools at an elementary age. Our family is heavily engaged in the school district and co-curricular activities. I am experienced as a former Elkonu Market City Council member. I was on the hiring panel, involved in conducting interviews for the Chief of Police, reviewed and helped allocate the city budget, directly engaged with the community, seeking their input. Full-time, I am a contract negotiator for corporate at a Fortune 500 company, reviewing multimillion-dollar contracts while working side-by-side with the legal department. I hold my real estate broker's license and constantly networking with the local businesses as well in the community. I am committed to providing high-quality, equitable programs to meet the needs of our students. We all benefit from high-performing schools, resulting in a strong local economy, improved home values, safer communities, and most importantly, students who become productive, contributing members of society. Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Appreciate everything. Let's dive right into it. We got a lot to get through tonight. So I'll start with the first question. This is in regard to relationships. All right. "The strength of our schools is a key factor when businesses are considering building, expanding, or relocating to Lakeville. We believe it is important that the ISD 194 Board and leadership maintains open and regular communication with the city, the Chamber, and the local business community. What do you view as the School Board's role in the relationship with the Lakeville business community?" And we're going to move the rotation over one with each question. So I'm going to start with Mr. Hall.
Well, I absolutely agree. Obviously, time is a constraint for all of us, but I would welcome being a regular fixture in the Chamber and Rotary and Lion Club meetings. I know that all of these organizations already regularly highlight student and student achievements as part of their member gatherings. I'd love to help broaden the spotlight and show off even more of the terrific things that are happening in our schools. As for the School Board's role in that relationship, I think it's very clear that we, along with our community's residents, share a symbiotic triangle. We serve one another. We depend upon one another. We benefit one another. So understanding that this, it would be my position that the School Board members should be present at important business and community events, just as we expect businesses and residents to be present at ours. So yes, to summarize, I fully support these partnerships. I believe that they are critical to our cause. And as a School Board member, I would personally engage in activities which strengthen these ties.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, I would agree with a lot of what Daryl says. The Lakeville business community is obviously a very important resource for our schools, especially when we have a limited budget and the restraints that go along with that. Any assistance and resources that we can receive from our local businesses will serve to enrich the education of our students. As far as our role, I mean individually, as Board members, we would be part of the Chamber of Commerce and could attend any meetings or engage with the business members. From the Board itself, though, you know, our School Board's role is one of policy governance. And so we're limited as far as what we do individually. As a Board, though, we set the policy of the school, and then through implementation of the administration, that policy goes out. So for the Board engagement in business, if we make it a priority on the Board's side, a policy priority that we pass, and then follow up and make sure that the administration is implementing it and following through with that, then we can more actively utilize business resources and those relationships that are available to us and our community as it is vital to the school's success. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
Great, thanks. I'm going to echo a lot of what Daryl and Matt have already said, that the importance of this relationship between ISD 194 and Lakeville business community is very important. I think as part of that, something I took in during the boundary adjustment process that ISD 194 went through last year was making sure that our school district was understanding the priorities that the City of Lakeville had for growth areas and for needs of the community. The consultant that we work with had continual input from this body that sits at this table normally to help make sure that the school district and the input team were making good decisions for the health of the broader community at large. I think it's also important for the School Board, and this goes without saying perhaps, but that we need to make sure we have strong schools so we continue to attract employees to our area and to Lakeville in particular. We have seen, I think, in some communities when the strong schools aren't as prevalent, that, as Don mentioned, values of homes can go down, and also the attractiveness of getting high-quality employees can go down. So we need to make sure that we maintain high standards for our students in order for those families to want to move here. I think continually having listening sessions with the business community is important, and I would advocate for increased partnership in this area. And then finally, as ISD 194 is the largest employer in Lakeville, I think it's important that we have a healthy school system so that people will live and shop here who also work in ISD 194.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fangle.
Yeah. I mean, I think it goes without saying. I think we're all going to come on this forum tonight and promote the importance of this partnership, right? That's why I think the Chamber hosts forums like this for School Board candidates, is that this relationship between our schools and the local businesses is essential to what makes Lakeville what it is. We have a robust level of programs that I think we'll talk about more later tonight, where our students have the opportunity to meet with local business owners and learn about potential careers and opportunities where they can be engaged outside of the classroom. And so I think it's really important for the School Board to continue that connection and continue that conversation. As an individual School Board member, it would be important for me to attend events throughout the year that are essential to our businesses, that bring our community together and connect us. I think that as we come together and we join and we celebrate all of that is Lakeville, I think that that partnership and that communication is essential and ongoing. Forums and ways to connect with each other, there's lots of opportunity there.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
I see the Board's role as a bridge, connecting education with economic development, making Lakeville an attractive place for businesses to grow and thrive. Echo much of what's already been said here. The Board has a responsibility to maintain a strong and open relationship with local businesses and the business community. Keeping those lines of communication open and working collaboratively with them will ensure that our schools are aligned with the needs of local businesses. I think that's critical in terms of what they're looking for, knowing what they're looking for, and being able to adapt curriculum for the future to meet those needs. The business world changes pretty rapidly. It's a little bit different than government. It moves at a very quick pace. That experience and exposure, I think, is critical to tie back to our students' learning. In my experience, it's incredibly important to maintain open lines of communication. I take meetings regularly, even if it's just a recurring touch point. You never know when somebody's going to have a need or a reason to reach out and a reason to connect and say, hey, can you help me with something? I think that's important in this specific situation, kind of addressing this question.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Seepersaw.
Yes. So I feel that the School Board's role with the business community is to improve communication so that relationships can develop and maintain strong, resulting in support for the district. Business leaders and Chamber partners can offer expertise in areas like budget, human capital management, policy development, and implementation. When we're involving the business leaders and the Chamber partners with the school district, it also can help improve outcomes as being a more prepared workforce by playing a larger role in the school district.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carbone.
Thank you. After graduation, we hopefully are passing prepared people into the business community. And as a Board, we need to understand what the business market is that we're passing those folks into, and how those folks need to be prepared for those markets. So relationships and communication with the business community? Absolutely. I think you've probably heard that down the line. We need to know our market, and certainly the School Board needs to integrate itself into the business community and also be involved in the business community. It will aid in the decisions that need to be made to make sure, again, career preparedness. That was one of the things that's extremely important, and that's a great way to start understanding when someone is career-prepared. The School Board itself is technically supposed to be governance, but that doesn't mean that we, as School Board members, can't be involved in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Going off-script here a little bit, but I'll throw three things out there for you. We have a Bowling for Education event we do every year with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber Access and Issues Group, which I chair, is an awesome forum for both people in the community and for the Board, because we bring people across all levels of the community. We have people from the city. We have county. We have congressional. We have School Board, et cetera, that come to the meeting. It's a great way to find out and coordinate all those things. And then coming up next month, we do have the State of the Schools, which we do every year, and it's a great opportunity for the business community to give their feedback and for the schools to hear from the business community on what our interests are. So thank you all. So sorry for the little infomercial there. Get about the business. So next one is in regards to connection. Given that the Lakeville Chamber is a business advocacy organization, tell us specifically about your connection to the local business community and how you plan to engage throughout the year. And for this one, we're going to move one over. Mr. Swanson.
I believe it is me. So yeah, I've lived in Lakeville for 20 years. I've built two homes here in Lakeville. My most recent home was with Country Joe, so a local builder. I send my kids to Lakeville schools, and we spend way too much money at the Lakeville Target. So yeah, that's how I engage on a personal side with the local business community. From a professional side, I am an attorney. I do represent several clients that are in the Lakeville area. And we definitely appreciate that Lakeville has established a thriving local economy with many businesses that are coming here in large part due to the success of our schools. As I noted before, as a Board member, we automatically become members of the Chamber, which I do intend to utilize that opportunity to foster relationships with local businesses in order to take advantage of any support that may be available to our talented students that will be graduating from our schools and looking for employment. I mean, ideally, we're going to be able to create a system where the students want to come back and live in Lakeville and make this their home for years to come. By having a healthy school that is academically competitive with all other schools in the state and achieving what it has in the past, we can bring that back there. We will have that community for years to come. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
Great, thanks. Like Matt, we too spend too much money at Target and probably Northern Tap House. So that's one way I'm engaged. But I live in the Burnsville area of the school district, and in that role, I've served on a number of different committees and commissions for the broader regional economy. So I served as the Chair of the Ames Commission in Burnsville, which is a public-private partnership between the City of Burnsville and Beneworks to run the Performing Arts Center in Burnsville. I also was appointed by my Commissioner to serve on the Dakota County Extension Committee. And through that work, we support all the 4H programming that's happening throughout our county, including youth development programs related to business and entrepreneurship. We also get to recognize the Farm Family of the Year every year in Dakota County. So it's really great to see how the agricultural community is within our regional economy are supporting both Lakeville but the broader area. I think like Matt, I'm excited, if elected, to be further engaged in the Lakeville Chamber. I think there's a lot of great things that are happening in our school district related to business development and career exploration for students. But I think there are really exciting things that are on the horizon or things that we could steal from peer districts. My husband is a Dean of Students at Shakopee High School, and I'm really impressed by their academy model that's working with local businesses in a very robust way. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fangle.
Yes. So throughout my time on the PTO, I have worked to engage with local businesses to support our annual events and fundraising efforts. This includes reaching out to connect with business leaders This includes reaching out to connect with business leaders who share our goals and inquire how they may be willing to partner with us. We are often seeking out t-shirt sponsors or sign sponsors for our various walkathons and family fun night events. And it's important for me to help build that relationship and build that community. When you patronize local businesses and engage with them, you're helping to build and create that community and create a space that is very much about connecting with each other. Personally, we enjoy patronizing lots of local businesses. I think I spend more money at boutiques probably than Target these days. And then restaurants, our kids love so many of our local restaurants. LBC is a favorite for their mac and cheese. And my husband and I enjoy going to these places, knowing that we are supporting our neighbors and that our money is staying local, and building the space and continuing to support the growth of Lakeville. Any business that is willing to put money, time, or effort into our community and our school district is a priority for me and my family.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you. I also support all of our lovely local restaurants here quite often, having kids, Target, yep, all the time. Target bill tends to exceed more of the other bills more often than not. I understand the importance of building the strong business relationship. I know of a number of industry professionals and a number of the business owners here in Lakeville. I love to shop local when we can. I enjoy coaching in youth sports and how sport can bring communities and businesses together. The fundraising piece of that tends to link a lot of families and individuals. As a member of the board, I'd like to ensure that I have a pulse on the community. On a more personal level, I'd like to participate in future chamber events, share my experience, and learn what challenges the local community is facing. My experience has taken me all over the country, Canada, and abroad. So, I feel I have a bit of global business exposure that differentiates me from some of the other candidates here. If elected, I'd like to have frequent, open, honest dialogue with the superintendent. I'm very interested in sharing my knowledge, learning more from the community, and working to apply those synergies to programs that will help our students be real-world ready.
All right, thank you. Ms. Supersod.
So, I've been a licensed real estate professional in the area since 2016. I assist my clients in the biggest investment that they're going to make in their life that builds trust and that builds a relationship, that also, in turn, has them calling for other reasons, whether it's a plumber that they need, or whether it's HVAC, or whether it's an inspector for whatever reason. But my business has always been referral-based, and those referrals were based on my networking in the community. Oftentimes, I do need to partner with other business owners to get work done, mainly choosing local business owners, whether it's a construction company to build a new home for a client, or whether it's connecting with, like I said, a local plumber or HVAC to help with client inspection findings, finding a local house cleaning business even to refer a client to, or even the local boutique to make a client gift. I've always used the opportunity to engage with the local business owners, and that's what I've been doing for more than 10 years now.
All right, thank you.
Very good, thank you. I spend my money on Main Street. I go to Ace Hardware, I go to B-52s, State Farm, LBC. As a matter of fact, I may go to Dairy Delight and buy myself an ice cream cone after this. While building a house here also, we use the local builder versus a national builder. And in the course of doing that, many of the subcontractors that came in for plumbing, heating, electrical, et cetera, et cetera, I developed a relationship with, got their information, and referred them to other people in the community or in the neighborhood, so that hopefully that will expand their business and make them a strong, and help increase the business community here locally in Lakeville.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hall.
I believe in honest self-assessment, and the honest answer is that I could probably be more engaged. I'm a father who takes a very active role in his daughter's life, so aside from my career, the large balance of my time is dedicated to her, and of course, that includes all of the volunteering and civic pursuits that I have related to the school district. But that said, we are consumers. We purchase from local and small businesses when this is an option, and much of our dollars for entertainment and exercise and dining are spent right here in Lakeville. We also enjoy the many community events that our local businesses make possible, like Youth Sports, Panda Frog, the Consumer Expo, Holiday on Main, we mentioned Bowling for Education, DL Boo, Taste of Lakeville, and there are many, many more. So, all this is to say that I truly appreciate our business community. I thank you for all that you do and offer, and I pledge, especially if elected, to have a regular presence in chamber meetings and events.
All right, excellent. I think we... Go to the next question, which is tax burdens. And we'll start off with Ms. Cameron when we get there. As Lakeville continues to lead the state in residential growth, how will you balance the need for more classrooms, programming, and staff while minimizing an increased tax burden on residents and business? Ms. Cameron.
Thanks. This is a complicated question, obviously, with the growth that we're seeing in Lakeville and also in 194. We have an expensive model for our school district, and that was decided decades ago to create smaller school communities. There's lots of benefit to that. Kids have more opportunities to participate in high school sports or in arts and things like that. But there's also drawbacks. A higher cost to do that means that we need more bonds and we need more staff to run these facilities. That's a decision our community has made, and I think we will stick with that. But I think as we go forward, we need to be planful in how we build. So, do we do additions onto buildings, or do we do new buildings? I think those are up for debate as we move forward with the growing student population. And I think something that I would like to consider is how can we build perhaps facilities using one site, like a multi-campus opportunity, to reduce costs on building and efficiencies? Many school districts, 196, as an example, has many sites where elementary and middle are shared sites, and this allows them to save money and save tax dollars. I think at the end of all this, it's important to recognize that if we want to keep up with our peers, like the Minnetonka's, the Wayzettas, the 196's of the world, we need to support the schools like they do. Over the last 20 years, those school districts have passed 100% of their referendums. We've passed 60%. There's a difference there.
All right, thank you. Ms. Fangle.
Yes, our exponential growth is and will continue to be a challenge for our school district. New housing developments often attract young families, meaning more students in our schools. With the opening of Highview this fall, we created more space for elementary students. However, we need to imminently address capacity at the middle school level. Some adjustments were made to balance the schools this last fall, but it's a short-term solution for a long-term problem. We need to either build another middle school, or as Amber alluded, to expand the three that we have. We will need to accommodate our growth, which of course comes with cost. The bond to build Lakeville South will phase out in the next year, which frees up significant dollars to use for other capital expenses. Our community growth is currently outpacing the capacity of our schools, and we need to allocate a higher... I'm sorry, we need to allocate higher monies to ensure that our district can catch up. Many of the districts in our area tax at a higher rate as they believe in the importance of funding public schools and see the benefit high-quality education has on their overall community. One thing that I continue to hear from our community members is that you really need to have a clear explanation of budget spending that everyone can understand. You shouldn't need an advanced financial degree to understand where your tax dollars are being spent, and it is one of my priorities, if elected, to make our financial reports digestible for staff, parents, and community members at large.
Thank you. Mr. Nickson.
Thank you. This is one that kind of hits home for me. Over the next four years, the school board's going to oversee nearly $1 billion in budgeting. It's going to be required to strategically forecast and have a long-term vision. To balance a need for classrooms, staff, and programs while minimizing tax burdens, we must focus on responsible financial planning. Partnering with the city planners, exploring alternative funding, like public-private partnerships and grants, will reduce reliance on tax increases. Transparency is key. Taxpayers deserve to know where their money is going and trust it's spent wisely. My experience as a management consultant has taught me the importance of asking the right questions, validating answers, and involving a broad cross-section of voices. We need to avoid siloed thinking, seek input from the community, and engage Lakeville's talented professionals. The school board, as a governing body, must provide oversight and ensure every dollar supports the success of students and staff. With smart financial management, strong partnerships, and transparency, we can meet the needs of our growing district without adding unnecessary pressure on the residents.
All right, thank you. Ms. Supersod.
Thank you. So, with the large numbers, with the large number of companies that we have in our district, Amazon, FedEx, BTD, Treehouse Foods, there's Schneidermans, a couple other that I probably will think of tomorrow or tonight, but it would be doable, actually, to create a partner and education program that other districts have around the country, and they very much succeed with. These partnerships are a mutually supportive arrangement between a business or community organization and a school district. Some of the activities from the partnered company that could benefit the district would be to assist with fundraising activity, and this could help fund classroom staffing costs or projects. Release time for employees to mentor, tutor, or read to students, this could help with the shortage of staff or volunteers. Sponsor a school upgrade project with materials or volunteers, this could help cut from the budget. Those are very realistic and current-in-place activities that districts are using across the nation to help relieve tax burdens on the community.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carbone.
Yes, I think community expansion, the way it's happening here in Lakeville, is more than a school board issue. I think it's in... We need to foster collaboration with all of the community leaders, and that includes city councils, small business, Chamber of Commerce, school board, business community, et cetera, et cetera. We need to look at efficiencies, we look at where the values are, we need to look at policies. You know, in my business career, one of the things that I learned is you don't always fix problems with money. You can look at utilizing human resources talent, looking at the way things are structured, looking at policy and the way policy creates behavior or direction or structure. So, those kinds of things are the things I think need to be discussed and thought about on the board.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hall.
In a Carol Levin interview earlier this year, our mayor was asked the question about why Lakeville continues to grow. And his response was schools, parks, and public safety. And I agree with him. When I moved here six years ago, those were my reasons, in that order. When we buy a home, we have not only bought some building and some land, we've also bought the support systems. And when we choose to invest in these systems, and I very purposely use the word "invest", we enjoy the possibility of capital appreciation to our own property. And for anyone who has lived in another community like I have, where the choice has been not to invest in schools, and parks, and police officers, and firefighters, well, you also know the possibility of principal loss. Listen, I believe our school has a responsibility to spend money more wisely, and to be financially transparent so that decisions can be openly scrutinized. But above all else, they need to provide the resources to fully educate every student, and it would be negligent not to request additional monies when needed. The yes or no, the agreement on whether or not to assume that burden, that's a taxpayer decision. But the school board needs to make those requests with respect to the community having the authority to accept them or not.
All right, thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, so there are several realities we have to deal with when analyzing this issue of the tax burden on the residents. First, we have approximately 60% of our population that have no students in school, no students in public school, and yet they are still paying their taxes and supporting our schools. So, we have that group of taxpayers and voters that we have to answer to as well. And then there's the other fact that 75%, or roughly 75% of the school's funding, comes from the state. And the state, unfortunately, the legislature only provided this last year a 2.1% increase on the per pupil funding, which, if anybody knows, does not keep up with inflation. So, that creates additional budget issues for the school district. I mean, ultimately, when we're talking about passing levies, it really needs to be something where we're building trust with the people in the community. I mean, everyone who's up here has talked about accountability for the budget or transparency. I mean, it's shocking to me that no one seems comfortable with the way we're spending money. There doesn't seem to be a lot of transparency. And if we can open up the books, because it is all taxpayer money, we let the public know what the money is being spent on, ensure that it's being spent wisely, that we're being good stewards of the taxpayers' money, then we're building trust. And then when we have a levy, or we need to pass a levy in order to fund something, the taxpayers aren't questioning whether we're wasting their money, and we'd have their confidence in their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I think we'll be starting with Ms. Fangle on this one. This is regard to cell phones. All right, state law requires school districts to adopt cellphone use in school policy. What do you think such a policy should look like?
Such a hot topic. Well, as you know, the state legislature passed a law that will now require all school districts to have a policy in place by March of 2025. Currently, the Minnesota School Board Association has developed a policy on this topic that many of our area school districts have already successfully adopted. I would propose that Lakeville area schools also follows that model and utilizes the expertise of MSBA to adopt as our policy as well. It's my understanding that the MSB policy will include guidance and best practices from the Minnesota Elementary Schools Principal Association and the Minnesota Secondary School Principal Association. It will be important that any policy we develop and implement will have the support of our administration, as they will be the people that are doing the work on ensuring that our students are following the cellphone policy. They will need to implement the change and manage the outcomes. As we develop a policy, we must include our administrators in the process.
All right, thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
So, as we talk about cellphone policy, I want to link it back to the business community. Cellphone use has been linked to numerous safety concerns among companies in many heavy process industries. They ban cellphone use if you're operating a forklift, if you're in a chemical processing area, if you're in any sort of area with mechanical equipment where you can potentially lose a finger, hand, and arm, anything like that. Recent statistics also show that car accidents show 1 in 9 are due to distracted driving using a cellphone. The same concepts can relate to the classroom. It's essential to set clear expectations while giving teachers the flexibility to manage their classrooms in a way that maximizes focus and learning. Cellphone use policy should strike a balance between allowing access to technology and minimizing distractions. Policies need to be fit for purpose. I support policies that limit cellphone use during the day and eliminate use during instructional time. I understand communication has changed dramatically in the last 25 years, so the parent-child connection is much different than it was decades ago. I'd like to see the child present and not distracted. It's often something I see in the workplace. People get so into Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, and gaming that they don't focus on the task in front of them. In an educational situation, that could mean missing valuable information. In a work-related situation, again, that could be loss of an appendage or loss of life. Cellphones have a place in society, but not for use in the classroom. Schools provide other means to access technology already.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nicholson. Ms. Supersod.
Yes, so it's obviously no secret that cellphones are a distraction in the classroom. And like it's been mentioned, I think from Laura, that Minnesota legislation mandated that districts adopt a cellphone policy by March of 2025. I believe in Lakeville, currently, each school building is working with teachers to put practices in place based on what is working for that school. I know at the elementary level currently, they are practicing no phones at school. The middle and high school level, they're practicing no phones in the classroom. I do believe currently that the subject is being discussed with the principals and teachers to come up with a policy by March. However, this policy might need to look different at each age level, and it might need to take into consideration certain circumstances some students might have. I do feel that this type of policy doesn't need to be black and white and can have variations on each situation. I also feel that this type of policy shouldn't be set in place... I also feel that this type of policy shouldn't be set in place without feedback and consideration from parents of what this policy should look like. So as of right now, I wouldn't be able to give a concrete example of what I think a cellphone policy should look like without discussing it with the parents, families, students, and teachers, principals, and staff.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Carbone.
Very good. Thank you. You know, as good as cellphones are, and we all have one in our pocket probably as I speak, they disrupt the learning environment. Cheating, bullying, if a teacher's up in front of the classroom and somebody's on their phone, the courtesy of teachers not paying attention to the teacher. You know, The Wall Street Journal had a report recently that teen anxiety and depression was fostered by social media. And, you know, when you think about that, it feeds the question, one of the questions that hasn't been asked yet, question number two about mental health in schools. So, so I think it's not only about courtesy and bullying and cheating, it's also about mental health, which we'll talk about, I'm sure, when you pull it out of the fishbowl there. You know, on the other hand, moms are texting kids and saying there's a change in the carpool, and they need to know that so they know what door to come out of. So when I was in business, one of the things that created a problem was you would walk by a cubicle where somebody was working, and then somebody, instead of someone doing their job, they're sitting there playing a video game. And we had to pass policies where no cellphones in hand, no cellphones, no cellphones on desk, no cellphones visible, and cellphones turned off. Now, I know that a lot of the folks before me have already mentioned policies that have been enacted, and I think that, you know, keeping, keeping cellphones in lockers, backpacks, turned off, and if there's a breach in that, it goes to the office and the parent needs to pick it up.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
So we were discussing the state law that goes into effect in March 2025, but it affects everyone. This legislation will impact every one of the 331 school districts in the state. And so there are already a fair number of best practices and templates from reputable organizations out there for us to glean from. One consistent recommendation, which I agree with, is that we should favor a solution that at the very least eliminates private cellphone use during instructional time. However, as for the specifics, I believe there's an opportunity for us to better collaborate with our key stakeholders, and specifically our teachers and our students. As some may know, in 1993, the Minnesota State Legislature enacted a law that required school boards to have student representation. And while this law was later repealed, nearly one-third of school boards in our state still include a student member today. I'm not necessarily making that recommendation, but what I would support is a suggestion that our administrators allow our high schoolers to form a joint council with educator advisement to develop a policy within state guidelines for the school board to then review, edit, and approve. Not only would this give our students a fair voice in a matter that personally affects them, but also builds leadership and civic skill. And ultimately, it improves both participation and buy-in, which, after all, is the aim of any policy.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
I might make myself sound really old, but somehow we managed without cellphones in the classroom, and I don't really see a great argument for why a student needs a cellphone in the classroom. I believe there is a proposed policy for our schools where the students wouldn't be allowed to have the cellphone from bell to bell, they could access it from their locker during passing time or at lunchtime. I'm totally fine with that, but I would absolutely be in favor of a policy where cellphones are not allowed in the classroom. If there's an emergency, I mean, we still have landlines at the school, right? I mean, parents can contact the office, and the office can get hold of the teacher. So, yeah, I, yeah, I don't even, I don't see what the problem would be with banning cellphones in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
As I mentioned, my husband is a dean of students. This has been a topic in our household for many years. How do you deal with the cellphone problem? They've tried locked bags in their classrooms, that didn't work. Tried locking them up in like a closet-type thing, that didn't work. But I think what's changed recently, and my husband would agree, is the socialization that we need a policy change on this issue. So it's been in the media so much, the state law being passed, I think has brought parents in particular along that this is something that we need to address. So at his high school, and I agree with many that have spoke up here already about this topic, is trying to adopt policies that have been effective and recommended by, like the Minnesota School Board Association and the elementary and secondary principal associations. I think at the heart of this is that there's a local component. So I don't think a school board, I think school board's policy should be letting the administrators at those, at the elementary, middle, and second, and high school level decide what the, what the implementation should look like of a cellphone policy, because they know what's, how to operate things the best. I think at the heart of this, and I talked to my husband about this recently, is we need to take the burden off of teachers. They have a lot to manage in their classrooms already, so to the extent that there is a clear-cut process where they're asked, a student's asked to put it away, they get one warning, and then if that doesn't work, it escalates to the dean of students, which is my husband. He, he then is the one responsible for collecting the device, talking to the parents, and ultimately the goal is to not burn relationships between an academic teacher and a student, but to put that burden on the administrators.
All right. Thank you. Hold on, hold on, I just got, sorry. Thank you very much. Skip the lame jokes. This one is in regard to in-demand careers, and we are going to start with Mr. Nicholson. What, if anything, can be changed or improved in the curriculum to better educate students and families about current and future in-demand careers and provide opportunities which equip them with the skills needed to be successful in those industries? Mr. Nicholson.
Thank you. I think we need to ensure our curriculum is adaptable and relevant to the changing demands of the workforce. This means expanding access to STEM, trades, technical education, as well as business and entrepreneurship programs. Collaborating with the local businesses in the Chamber of Commerce to offer hands-on learning opportunities like internships, apprentices, and job shadowing is critical. Students need to be exposed to what potential employers are going to expect. While it may not be part of the curriculum, it is the intangible elements that sets our Lakeville students apart. As the overall culture becomes less formal, I think it's important to also include things like interviewing skills, punctuality, establishing a work ethic that can pay significant dividends. By offering these experiences, we not only prepare students for in-demand careers, but also provide them with a clear understanding of the opportunities available locally and beyond, and how to pursue them.
Thank you. Ms. Supersod.
So I believe that we can have more career path and career-focused research classes at the freshman and sophomore level in high school, allowing students to engage in career thinking activities earlier. For students choosing to head off to college post-graduation, they are visiting colleges by their junior year or doing PSEO classes by then. For those students who want a technical post-high school education, those students should also be able to dive into the technical education or the trades work. For example, plumbers are required to have four years on-the-job training as a registered apprenticeship under a master plumber, followed by passing the journeyman plumber's exam. What if we came up with a program to allow the trades to hire junior and senior high school students to start apprenticeships early to get a head start? HVAC apprenticeships typically require 2,000 to 3,000 hours of on-the-job training that can take three to five years to complete. There are so many local businesses that we could partner with in our district to get a program up and running to allow the students seeking the trade jobs to get started early.
Thank you. Mr. Carbone.
Thank you. Just like budget transparency, I believe the classroom curriculum transparency is as important. I've done a lot of door-knocking in the last month and talking to parents for obvious reasons. And what I found, and this won't surprise you, parents want the best for their kids. Everybody does. But they're not quite sure how to get that. And a lot of them tell me they don't know what's, what's best for their kids until the report card comes home, and then they see the grades, and they see the classes they're taking, and then more discussions happen than not. So I believe that more education for parents on what the curriculums are and, and how they create pathways to careers is important. And, and I'll just give you personal observation, many parents don't have this knowledge. And I think as a school board, it's crucial that this occurs. Public forums, town halls, guest speakers from different disciplines, job shadow programs, whatever the case may be, to educate the parent. I do think there's an analysis that needs to be done, you know, is, are the classroom curriculums keeping up with the speed of the modern workforce? Because the reality is, we need to make sure that the public school systems are cultivating the talent to feed the world's largest economy, and that's our job, and that's our job to do so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Hall.
I want to make certain that in answering this question, I'm being fair to our staff. While it is, is true that the school board maintains governance, it is the executive director of teaching and learning under the supervision of the superintendent, who is responsible for our curriculum. And out of respect for her 32 years of service with the district, I'm not going to immediately assume that I know better. However, there, there is a curriculum advisory committee that meets five times each year to give her feedback, and for any ISD 194 resident that's interested in being part of that team, I encourage you to apply. With that said, though, I do have a personal philosophy, and that is that I think that we need to first make certain that every student is leaving us on level in reading, math, and science. And equally important, that these students have a proficiency in self-regulating emotions and making good personal decisions. That would be my core curriculum. And if somehow on top of these foundational skills, we can also instill in these same young people both a love of learning and an aptitude for finding dependable study, we will build lifelong learners. We build emotionally and adaptable, academically adaptable, community members who can tackle any problem in our workplace or our world. And that is how I believe we future-proof.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, thanks. I just want to give credit to Daryl. I appreciate him giving credit to the administration and the work that they're doing or have done in this area. I didn't realize, before looking into this, that the state actually requires that all school districts have a plan for the successful student transition to post-secondary education and employment. So this is already in the works, so we're stepping into this, you know, at an advantage. It's not like we're recreating the system here. There is the 2024 to 2025 program of studies that's been produced by our school district, which is very informative, and it does provide different opportunities for our students. It's hard for me to sit here right now and judge and say what could be improved, because I don't really know how successful those programs are, because I'm not on the school board and don't have any results from those programs. However, I, I am encouraged by the, the Career Experiences for Credits program and the Career Explorations program right now, which I believe is only offered at one of our middle schools for the eighth graders. It'd be great to see that expanded to all of our middle schools. I know I have an eighth grader, and so it'd be great if he gets some exposure to that. But in addition, I just jump back to something that Brett said, for career readiness, there is the simple thing of building a strong work ethic and resiliency in our students just through a rigorous education. Because as anybody knows, any employer knows, if you have somebody that's a worker that's hard-working and willing to step up to a challenge regardless of what their degree is or the credentials or certifications that they have, that's going to be a successful employee.
Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
Right. I agree with a lot of what Daryl and Matt have just said. I also agree that the purview of a school board is not to, to talk about how to improve curriculum necessarily, but to support the administrators in our district who do that and who have that expertise. That being said, my family has worked in seven different school districts around the Twin Cities, and while I think Lakeville has a really good start in this area, supporting career and post-secondary exploration, I think there's a lot of opportunities for growth or for exploration here. I think we see a lot of districts, like 196, for example, and also Shakopee, who are developing course sequences for students to move through a particular industry to get more in-depth knowledge about how to work in that field, ultimately resulting in an internship. They hold their courses off-site at a local business under the purview of a high school teacher, and it can go in-depth into kind of their passions and interests. I think also, we are not participating in the College in the Schools program, which is an opportunity for college, a dual enrollment college credit for our high school students. We're the only school in the South suburban conference that doesn't have this as an option for our students. And also, there's other programs, someone mentioned STEM education called Project Lead the Way, Wayzata, 196, Minnetonka, Maple Grove, et cetera, are all participating, and it's a STEM curriculum for career readiness that also provides college credit. So I think we build off of where we are and see how we can plug into these existing programs for additional support for our curriculum.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fangel.
I'm not sure if it's harder to go first or go last. There is an entire team of people within the district that is responsible for developing and implementing curriculum, and they work with our Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee, which Daryl mentioned, TLAC, to present any significant changes and address concerns before making them. In addition, there are strict guidelines that are set forth by the Minnesota Department of Education for what must be included in any curriculum in Minnesota public schools. As a school board member, I would lean on our expert educators, who are worked tirelessly to develop robust curriculum that meets or exceeds the standards and prepares our students for success. I do think that as a board member, I am in support of working with our curriculum team to better understand how we can develop more opportunities outside of the classroom to engage our students and increase their exposure to both postgraduate work and education opportunities. I also think that it's important to engage with families to share opportunities for their students and how they can get involved in career readiness programs and can improve the reach of these offerings. I also understand that new this year, with the addition of counselors to our high school level, they are planning to meet with juniors each spring to talk about career readiness and career options, which I think is a great first step in that direction.
All right. Thank you. You're absolutely right. It takes, the first spot is tough and the last spot is tough. So that's why we, that's why we rotate them, and I appreciate that. All right, we're starting off with Ms. Supersod this time. I think we have room for one more question, so just trying to balance out what we have here. I'm going to pick one of them, mental health. Mental health continues to be important to businesses because of the intermediate and long-term effects on employee engagement at work. What role and responsibility do you believe the school district has in addressing student mental health?
So it is very important for the district to have mental health resources our students need at each age level to succeed academically and into their post-graduation years. I believe this is the role that needs to follow. Currently, our district is extremely understaffed in this department, and the student-to-staff ratio is at 512 to 1. Student enrollment has grown by 9%. This hardly puts a dent in our district's needs. The school district is asking for a referendum to be passed this November. This referendum would provide consistent academic, college, and career, personal, and social readiness. It would add nine counselor, social work positions at middle school level and two at high school level. The referendum would add strengthened behavioral support by adding, sorry, seven behavioral specialists at elementary schools and one at Crystal Lake Education, which obviously adding the behavioral specialists and the counselors is going to help with the mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carbone.
Thank you. You know, the word "mental health" spans a broad category. You know, is it a psychotic episode? Is it anxiety, is it an anxiety disorder? Is it just stress from an exam? You know, all of these things obviously need to be addressed in the school system if there is an episode with a particular student. But I think, and it probably happens, but I think it needs to be, it certainly needs to be done if not, is to make sure that teachers have the proper education and training to recognize symptoms and to recognize when something might erupt. And, and certainly there should be, and I'm sure there is an action plan and resources to handle those types of situations. And I also think we need to look at what's the role of the parent in that, and can we provide a list of outside-the-school resources for the parent if, if the school is not capable of handling that particular situation? You know, we talk about mental health for students, I'd like to add a new one there. What about teacher burnout? I'm going to switch gears here for just a minute. I'm looking at a recent poll in The Wall Street Journal, and 42% of teachers say that the stress and disappointment the stress and disappointment is worth, only 42% of teachers say that the stress and disappointment in their job is worth it. Now, when you compare that to 2018, there were 70% of teachers that said that. And when you dig down into the poll, it says the biggest burnout reason is misbehavior. So I think we've got... Thank you.
Thank you.
And ISD 194 is a strategic plan. We have a stated mission that we will provide educational opportunities that ensure academic, social, civic, and personal readiness for every student. And as part of this, we identify meeting social, emotional needs as an important element. In my day-to-day life, I'm a person that hires and fires. I'm a parent. I'm a community member. I'm a neighbor. And I am now someone seeking a role on your school board. In all of these capacities, I understand that life's opportunities can be limited by one's academic or emotional aptitude. And so as a school and as a society, I believe we greatly benefit when our learning systems include our emotional development alongside reading and math. In November, our community will vote on a levy that could provide additional counseling resources throughout our district. Some of these monies would be specifically dedicated to behavioral specialists and deans, the individuals in our school community who tirelessly work with students to regulate emotions, make positive choices, and address traumatic life events. I support this levy, and I would also support other measures that might train, promote, and provide mental health services for our students.
All right, thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, I just want to build on what has already been said a little bit. There is a spectrum of what mental health means, mental illness means, and I do want to note that we have to be careful as a school district to not overstep into an area that we weren't meant to be in. For those cases, that might be a little bit more on the extreme side. Schools aren't equipped, I think we would all agree, aren't equipped to handle every mental health illness, nor should we try to. Additionally, we need to be careful that we're not stepping into an area that should be under the purview and control of parents. And so, you know, I would advocate that whenever there is an issue, that we, again, collaborate with the parents, bring them into the situation, let them know what's going on. And if it's an issue that the school is just not equipped to handle with the parents, that that's something that maybe the parents have to handle in another setting, and we don't have the budget as a school to be both a mental health facility and a school educating our students. While I agree there are certain things we can do on maybe the lighter side of the scale, I don't think we're equipped, nor should we be reaching over into the more extreme side. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Cameron.
I think the relationship between mental health challenges and poor academic achievement is widely documented in scientific research. It's pretty simple. If you're not ready to learn, then you're not going to be able to learn. And so if our goal is academic achievement for our students, that means supporting them in all areas of their being, as Daryl mentioned. I fully support the levy this November. We lag behind peer districts, as Don mentioned, by a significant amount. We had no counselors in Lakeville until this year for many, many years. Compare that to ISD 196. They have a counselor for every 250 students. Wayzata, every 300 students. We now have some counselors at the secondary level, and we have one counselor for every 600 students. And what I learned is that every 30 minutes, our counselors are booked right now. Our students are asking for this. They need this, and it will help them be successful, both in high school and beyond. I think what this levy supports is, as some people have mentioned in the research, that we need trained staff who know how to deal with these complex student behavior and mental health concerns beyond what teachers can address. Teachers are there to help students focus on their academic achievements, and we need the supports in the classroom and in the buildings to help with kids who need additional supports. Again, I fully support the levy, and the fact that we don't have these supports in our school system, we are lagging behind our peers.
Ms. Fangle.
Thank you. Our children spend more than a third of their waking hours each week in school. The pressures of class, extracurriculars, and social connections are a lot for our kids to navigate. As a district, we should be providing robust support systems to help them manage these pressures and address social, emotional health. Our district has adopted social, emotional learning strategies through our multi-tiered system of supports framework that is geared towards preparing students to better manage their behaviors and emotions. This approach works to improve overall academic achievement and mental health through positive behavior interventions and self-management strategies. The work is built into the curriculum to reinforce positive goal-setting, social competence, and responsible decision-making. In addition, the levy on the ballot this fall would increase support for our students through more counselors, social workers, and behavior interventionists at all levels of education. These additional support staff will offer more options for mental health for our students and reduce some of the burden on our classroom teachers so that they can focus more on their lessons. All of this work is critical to the success of our students. Happy, supported kids are more engaged, have better educational outcomes, and maintain positive relationships with their peers.
Thank you. Mr. Nicholson.
As I agree with some of what Laura just finished up there with, I also would like to, as much as I could, I'd like to decouple mental health from education. But the reality is, our teachers are on the front line of that. I talk about it with my wife on almost a daily basis. When a student struggles in a traditional classroom setting, the teachers are forced to provide the burden of proof. Typically, before any intervention is made or a pair is assigned, the teachers are not mental health professionals, but they have to go through the process of documenting all of these activities before they can actually get support and help. We need to be cognizant of how decisions for one student impact the rest of the 20 or 30 students in the class. I think you have to distinguish between behavioral issues and clinical mental health diagnoses. We need to allow our teachers to use their classroom management skills when it comes to behavior. They need to be supported to implement logical consequences when expectations are not met. Taking away choice time, recess, things like that are things that require... It does require work and teaches important life lessons for the kids. The district wants kids to be resilient. They can't be resilient if they've never been told no or had to deal with a punishment and a consequence before. I find that one to be one that has traditionally lacked here in the last 10, 20 years. Pushing kids outside of their comfort zone, help them become more real-world-ready. Minor behavioral issues should be handled at the school so as to not disrupt the learning of the other 20-plus kids in a room.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't think we can squeeze in another question, so we're going to move on to the closing statements. I really appreciate all the answers given here. I think it's been great in just lining out where everyone is. That's fantastic. So with that, 60 seconds, I'm going to, I'm going back to the beginning.
Very good. Sir, you know, I'd like to answer the question, "Why me?" If the graduate is not career-ready, everything we've all been talking about tonight has diminished value. I've observed students in my college classroom that have graduated from public, parochial Catholic, and Christian high schools. I've seen the voids. I've seen what they need. I've mentored college students. I've brought them to my office and done mock job interviews and critique their resumes. I've judged academic competitions with other college professors. And as a business executive, I've interviewed graduates coming out of high school for real job opportunities. If the graduate isn't ready for the workforce, the trade school, or college, then we've failed them. And I believe my credentials fit what needs to be done. And don't forget, folks, what we're doing here is we're building adults.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hall.
Well, once more, I want to thank the Lakeville Area Chamber of Commerce. I appreciate you including us in the forum tonight. I also want to thank my fellow candidates. I'm grateful for your interest in helping our community and our schools, and every one of the 12,000 students that we are privileged to call our own. And I thank you, the viewer, who I now ask this question of. Who do you believe can be most effective? Who do you believe has the experience and the skill to get things done? Who do you believe will be able to work with the existing board members to complete the mountain of challenges that will beset this district in the coming year? This is not a small task. This is not a simple challenge. A board of mostly new faces will select a new board member, plan for a bond, hire a superintendent, negotiate with our teachers, approve a budget, set policies, and likely cheer on two new funding renewals. We must elect individuals that are ready to hit the ground running, so I implore upon each of you to not take this decision lightly. It affects our community. It affects our home values. It affects our way of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson.
Yeah, I am asking you to vote for Matt Swanson, vote for me, for a school board, because the stakes are high. With the recent MCA test results, we see that 58.3% of students tested at their grade level in math, 61.2% tested at their grade level in reading, and 42.2% tested at their grade level in science. This is just simply not acceptable for the Lakeville School District, and we can do better. We need to have a candidate that is going to put academics first. That is your priority. We're going to make sure that we are accountable for the spending of the budget, so it goes back towards that first priority of putting academics first. If we're spending our money on things that are not improving student success, we need to be held accountable for that. And then finally, we need a candidate that's going to collaborate with the parents, bring the parents into the teaching process as a resource for our schools, because that's where the success is going to happen. I am that candidate. I have the experience working with boards, advising boards, and I can bring that to the table here. Vote Matt Swanson. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cameron.
Thank you to the Lakeville Chamber for hosting this forum, and like Daryl, thanks everyone for being here today up here. I think people who know me would say that I'm very responsive to stakeholders. My job at the University of Minnesota works with the same stakeholders that Lakeville Area School does: teachers, parents, businesses, community members. People would say I'm a strategic thinker. My daily work is thinking about how the university can advance broad goals on student success. I'm a collaborator. I enjoy working with people to solve problems, and I have strong financial management and background experience. Through all my boards that I've served on, I've often been nominated and elected to serve as chair. I take that as a compliment. My colleagues see me as an impartial leader who is capable of building coalitions. I strongly believe that continued community support for Lakeville Area schools, we need to have student outcomes at the forefront. I graciously and humbly ask you for your vote to serve on this Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fangle.
I'd like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce and my fellow candidates here tonight. A special thank you also goes out to my family, friends, and neighbors for their unwavering support over the past few weeks. I am deeply passionate about this work and committed to the success of our students, schools, and community. I believe I can bring a new angle to the conversation, and will use my professional skill set and love of public education to serve the board every day. I would like to leave you with this. My priorities are clear. Build a visionary leadership team that will work collaboratively with our teachers and parents to address the challenges we face. Ensure schools continue to be a safe and welcoming space for all students and teachers to succeed. And rebuild the trust with our community through clear communication and clarity on spending. If elected to the board on November 5th, I will dedicate myself to ensuring that Lakeville Area Schools not only continues to thrive but excel in providing the best possible education for our community. Together, we can build a brighter future for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nicholson.
I agree with what Daryl and Matt said. I think this decision can't be taken lightly. We're talking about a billion-dollar budget over the next four years. I want to bring my expertise in project portfolio management, budget optimization, strategic planning, to ensure our district not only meets but exceeds expectations. With my focus on academic achievement, financial accountability, and supporting our teachers, I want to be a voice for teachers, parents, students, and taxpayers alike. Our district must move forward with transparency and a long-term vision that prioritizes both educational needs of our students and the fiscal health of our community. While I understand some of the business side of it, my wife has also provided me insights into the life of a teacher. I understand what it feels like to deal with the behavioral issues in school today, what bringing work home with you means for teachers, spending money to provide items for your classroom, like extra gloves, hats, snow pants, et cetera, and then also how a hug from a student can make it all worthwhile. I'm married to an extremely loving, patient, caring teacher. Lakeville has a bright future ahead, but it requires careful, thoughtful planning, and I ask for your support in making that vision a reality. Remember, vote Nicholson in November.
All right, thank you. Ms. Siprasad.
I am asking for your vote. Because of my skills, experience, and community involvement will bring value to the school board. As a mom, my high level of involvement in our schools and co-curricular programs builds trust within our school community. My experience from holding a prior seat in office is the leadership that the school board will need. My negotiating and communication skills, along with the sense of urgency I learned as a contract negotiator, are substantially valuable skills to have on the school board. As a real estate agent, my ability to network with other small business owners and community members helps me hear from all the school district partners. I will speak up for our students and for you. The district has some big decisions over the next few years. We need board members willing to listen and work together on behalf of the students. The school board and school administration need to be aligned. The school community and staff must be engaged in the process. We are not always going to agree on everything, but it's important how we come together to create solutions. We must work together to continue providing an excellent education for our students. I value the voice of the students, educators, and stakeholders across our school community. Vote Don Siprasad this November.
All right, thank you. And I want to say thank you to everyone here, all the candidates. I always say this, I've worked with many candidates in my life along the way, and everyone is dedicated to making their community a better place. It takes a lot of guts. It takes a lot of work to do this, and I truly appreciate every one of you stepping And I also will continue to thank you. Thank you to the City of Lakeville for this facility, to the Lakeville Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on, to Colleen LeBeau for helping us out with the timing here as well. This is, again, our forum that we're having. We have two more forums that we're doing, one for the city council and one for the two Lakeville-dominated house districts, Minnesota house districts, 57A and 57B. These will be broadcast live and also be rebroadcast on LGTV Channel 180 on Charter, the City of Lakeville and Lakeville Chamber's YouTube channels. And I always wanted to do this, links to our other ones will be right here and right here. I just put pressure on somebody. That's fine. We will remind people that the Lakeville Chamber is not making an endorsement this year, and I don't believe we've done one for many, many years now. So we want to provide a forum, and hopefully, this helps everyone make good decisions along the way. On behalf of the Lakeville Chamber and Board of Directors, thank you, and remember to vote Tuesday, November 5th. Thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.